Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here this evening. I ask that you bless each and every one of us. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Holy Spirit guide us during our discussions this evening. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that are before us. Lord, we give you the glory for what we are about to accomplish this evening in your son's name. Amen.
(Inhales) By the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have full attendance this evening, so we have a quorum. Thank you very much. Announcements?
I just have one announcement. I wanted to remind the Planning Commission that your organizational meeting at which you elect a chair and a vice chair will occur at the first meeting in February.
Thank you very much. Next item up is review and approval of the minutes of December 21st, 2016. I trust everybody's had a chance to review. If there are no questions or comments on the minutes, I'll take a motion.
Don't move.
Have a second?
Second.
I'll call the vote. Motion passes with one up station. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing, R16-004.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You'll recall, this is actually a continuation of a public hearing that you had last month for this request. Just to recap, this is a proffer amendment request to an approved rezoning that occurred last year that rezoned 171 acres from rural to residential two to create 59 lot subdivision with proffers. This property is located off Chancellor Road in between the Gordon and Old Plank Road intersections. The requested amendment last month was a little different, and I think some concerns had been raised at that meeting, and so the applicant took some time between that meeting and tonight to revise their request. And the updated proffer amendment would keep the commitments the same as far as that they are committing to either constructing those transportation improvements at the intersection of Old Plank Road and Chancellor, or paying the lump sum amount of that $971,000 to construct those improvements. What the amendment would be would be the timing, rather than what was originally approved, which was that they would pay the lump sum or construct the improvements within a year of preliminary plat approval, which is approaching in July of this year. What the amendment is, is that they would provide that at the 30th building permit, or certificate of occupancy, excuse me, which is about midpoint for their project. So that's their updated amendment. Staff continues to recommend denial of the requested amendment. As we stated in the staff report, that, you know, it's still, this is less than what was originally proposed, and so we're still maintaining a recommendation of denial, but obviously, I think this proposal gets you closer than what the original proposal had been.
What was the original amount, Kim? Did you have that?
The, what they had originally requested was that they not pay the lump sum amount, that they would spread it out across the entire 59 lots. They'd pay it on a cash, a per-unit basis.
Right, so the dollar value is the same?
It's the same.
It just occurs at the 30th occupancy permit, not building permit?
Well, rather than pay it on a per-unit basis, they'll pay that lump sum at the 30th occupancy permit.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question? What happens if they build 29 homes?
Well, then, we'd be kind of in that same position where there would be no improvements and no cash.
And I do have a concern with the occupancy permit issue versus the building permit, because they could never get the occupancy permit and not have to pay would be a concern. But any other questions for Kim at this point? The, the public hearing is still open, so I presume we go back to public comment, if that's correct.
Yes, and because the proffer statement has changed, you could offer the applicant an opportunity to speak?
I will do that. Lemme?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Clark Lemming, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants. As we indicated at the December meeting, after the rezoning, the sisters, Mr. Thorburn, the daughters, Mr. Thorburn, that own the property now, have been unable to sell the property after the rezoning because of the prior agreement to make the road improvements and/or pay the lump sum all upfront. I indicated at that time that we heard staff's concerns. We were somewhat surprised by the staff recommendation because we hadn't heard anything about it except until the staff report came out. So what we agreed to do was to compromise and set the original amount at midpoint in the development. And I don't think we have any great problem building permit versus occupancy permit, but what we had proposed originally when we filed the application was to handle this like most other zoning applications that have proffers and what is contemplated under state code, and that would be to pay the proffer at the time that each unit is approved for an occupancy permit. Now, as staff pointed out, this application comes to you somewhat differently, simply because they agreed through proffer to make this payment upfront. That didn't turn out to be feasible. The proffer also contains a provision that indicates that this payment or the improvement is due within a certain period after the preliminary subdivision plan. So the owners of the property, not being able to sell the property, are faced with the prospect of coming up with a million dollars, which they don't have, by July of this year. Now, with the modification that we've made, with the payment in the middle of the development, the, either the road improvement or the pavement, the county has the preference there, at the middle, midpoint of the development, we do have a contract. The contract is contingent on the approval of the proffer amendment, but we do have a builder that's willing to proceed. I think the best answer to the question that was posed by Ms. Carter, what happens if you only get 29 units? Well, this builder loses a whole lot of profit. He loses half of the profit that he would also possibly make from the development. That's a half-built development. So I don't, I think he would be the first one to tell you that that's not in his interest or anyone's best interest. What we've tried to do is to come up with a compromise position that permits the sisters to proceed with the development of the property as was anticipated, and still tries to preserve what the county has indicated is important ultimately, and that is that there be this improvement made, or that the funds come to the county to make the improvement, or do something else with. The county is not bound to make that improvement itself. So we think that that's a fair compromise here. Bear in mind that the, the impact on this intersection is not created by this development. This development has a very modest impact on the development. When we came before the county, as I indicated in December, with the original rezoning, the thought was, the county's focus at that point was transportation improvements, and of course, we understood that there were serious traffic concerns in the area, and thought this would be one way to address those. It simply didn't turn out to be feasible from a market standpoint. So we, we hope that the, we do appreciate the, I like the way the staff said it in, in the report with the way they wrote it rather than the way it was just stated. However, staff notes the proposal to complete the improvements or pay the cash contribution at the midpoint, rather than that full build-out is originally proposed, is an improved proposal. I like the way they said it in writing rather than the way Kimberly just said it to you. So we appreciate that, and we hope that the commission will see this as a reasonable compromise to a situation that at this point is not going to work out, I think, in anybody's interest, because the sisters just don't have the ability to come up with the money unless they sell the property. So thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but sum and substance, we've simply taken the original proposal and made the same agreement simply at the midpoint of the development.
Any questions for the applicant?
(Inaudible)
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lemming, were you originally around for the original proposal?
Yes, I was.
So just kind of curiosities, because I was not. I'm just kind of curious why it went RU to R2 as opposed to R1? Was the density just not allowed for R1?
That's correct. Yes, this was, this was the, I believe, Mr. Hughes may have a better handle on that, but this was the only density that I believe we could attain in that particular area, consistent with your comp plan.
And then for Kimberly and staff, what, what is the, what was the by right for the, for the property, for the RU with the 171?
It would have been 10.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. How are we guaranteed that we're going to get this million dollars if we only build 15 units? I mean, what kind of guarantee is the county going to get?
You mean, you mean the scenario that Ms. Carter?
If, just like the question was, we only get 29 units, suppose we only get 15 and the development stops, how does the county get their million dollars?
Well, the way the proffer is set up on its face, that it is entirely correct, that if you, if they put in 29 units and stop, that would be it. Now, you, as I indicated, I think the best answer to that question, and I think the builder who's here tonight, Mr. Stacy, would indicate that that's, that's half of the development. That doesn't help him very much either. So there is no guarantee. So, you know, and I'm not sure what, what one could be. You know, the situation is right now that the county's not going to get the improvements because there's not going to be one unit built unless there's a contract to, to build out the development. So that's the, that's the present scenario. So that's why we're looking for a compromise that permits the, you know, the, the problem with being able to sell the development has simply been that a builder having to come in to construct something like this has, has to go out and borrow money for a construction loan. And in fact, the sisters, I'll get into some of the contractual issues, the sisters are having to subordinate a note that they're going to take back on this to the construction loan. So if you pile on top of that, the requirement to pay the almost $1 million, either through the road improvement or the, the money upfront to the county, the builder is simply not in a position to, to do both, to attain the construction loan, because the collateral, the whole subdivision is just worth about $1.2 million. That's what the land is worth. So if you're going to have the, you're going to borrow the money to make the improvement and borrow the money to come up with the construction loan, there's simply not enough collateral to guarantee it. That's, you know, that's what the land is worth. So that's the, that's the dilemma we, we find ourselves in. And you, if you decide that this is a reasonable compromise, you know, quite honestly, I think you simply have to look at this and say, this is the only way that this is going to get developed under any circumstances. You know, I'm not sure how else it could be paired, you know, unless there were some other provision that says, you know, if for some reason you don't build all the units, then, you know, you back up and, you know, pay the per-unit proffer. I'm not sure how you would do that or calculate, or can't imagine a scenario where the developer, the one who's going to build out these units, would actually let that happen, because that wouldn't be in their interest either. So I think you have to look at it as a development that's going to happen, or it's not going to happen, and the only way it's going to happen is if, if the developer can get started. And then he's in a position to do what he needs to do, and also what the county wants him to do, which is to make the improvement. Or pay the money to the county, which is your choice.
Thank you.
That's about as honest as I can be about that. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's an absolute ironclad guarantee there.
Any other questions?
You used the right word, compromise.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a good word.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we're looking for. Compromise. And I want the sisters to be able to sell their property, because that's important, and I understand that. And I want the developer to be successful, I understand that. But I also want the county to be guaranteed that something, you know, well, even if it's 15 homes, as Mr. Bullock said, 15 homes built, 30 homes built, 27 homes built, that the county has some reassurance that the county will be also being compromised, you know, with everybody else. And this is my concern.
The only thing that I can, the only thing I can think of is some kind of backup provision, and I'm not sure exactly how the county would enforce this. You know, suppose they get to 29 units and the developer walks away. There'd have to be a period of time, you know, that would have to pass, I would think, in order for there to be any obligation to make a payment, you know, because it's better for the county, I think, and that was the whole reason with, you know, the other arrangement. What we originally proposed, you know, Mrs. Carter, we were trying to address staff's concern. The, the other arrangement was simply pay the, pay the money as the houses come along. You know, that's, that's the way state code envisions this. But there seemed to be more of a sentiment to get the improvement and all the cash at one time. So, you know, that's-
Now, say this again. You, tell me that again.
Well, when we, when we proposed this, when we came before you last month, the proposal that was on the table was simply that we would make routine cash proffer payments with the completion of each unit. You know, that's, that's what's contemplated under state law.
Right.
When we, and we were fine with that, but staff and I think some of you all were concerned about, well, but the deal we have now is that we get it all upfront, and either we get the money or the improvement upfront. And yes, on the face of it, that's a better deal for the county. The problem is, they can't make it happen.
I understand that.
So-
And I, I know exactly what you're saying on that. That's very true.
I guess the two compromise possibilities are, you know, to make the unit-by-unit payments?
Yes.
You know, which is what we originally proposed, or the other way, the other compromise that we looked at was, rather than giving you all of the money upfront, give you all of the money at midpoint.
Why did you decide not to do that unit-by-unit?
What, you mean the original proposal?
Yes.
Well, that was our, well, member staff was very concerned about that, you know, going from the ability, and staff pointed out in their staff report, that that would eliminate your ability to have all of the money at one time to do something with. You know, that the county was simply better off getting the money at one time, rather than on a piecemeal basis, on a unit-by-unit basis, which is what we originally proposed. Now, that does address your, that approach does address your concern-
Yes.
-about what happens if we get to midpoint-
That's right.
-and they stop. Now, I do think that's pretty far-fetched to have a half-built-out development, because there's a very strong incentive for the developer to move forward. But if you want an absolute guarantee that the money's going to come in as the development progresses, then the unit-by-unit payment is the one that ensures that the money comes along. So that's-
That is a compromise.
That's where we were last month, and we're happy to go back to that position. We don't, we were, that's what we originally proposed, and the criticism of that is simply that, you know, you don't get all the money at one time. And of course, the staff's criticism was, not only do you not get it at one time, but we don't get it upfront. Well, you're not going to get it upfront, because they don't have it to give to you upfront. I mean, they will default under the proffer if they can't, you know, move forward somehow. We're happy to go either way there, either with the per-unit payment, which gets you the money all along the way, or, and that, you know, that breaks down to a certain amount per unit, and we did propose that first time through, or the midpoint lump sum. Your, your pleasure, really. And if you can think of another concept, we'll be happy to talk about that. But those are the, I think, conceptually, the two different ways to go here.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We have a, we have an issue before us with the proffers and the condition that is listed, and that's what we're supposed to be doing. We're not supposed to be really negotiating. So what we have before us is what we have to deal with, not what was prior, because the conditions are the most recent dated conditions with the proffer amendment.
I don't think it was negotiating. I think that questions were asked and to be answered.
Yeah, the-
Yeah, but I just want to make sure. I'm not the board, but I want to make sure, and Ms. Lemming knows, because right now, what we're doing is dealing with the most recent things. It's not we can go one way or the other. We have a particular proffer amendment before us with the dated conditions, and that's what we'll be considering.
That's, that's entirely correct, and I think, I think what we were trying to get at is how we got to this point, and that was just-
Exactly.
And that was fine. But your point is well-taken, that before us is the proffer condition as it's, as it's laid out. Any other questions at this time? Do we have anybody that wants to speak to this? Anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this application? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing. I, I think this is a good compromise, from the aspect that halfway through the development, the, the monies will be available to, to make the improvements at that intersection that are so badly needed. And I'm comfortable at halfway, because after 29 homes, if you will, that those improvements would be made. And I would hate to wait until the end if we do it per-lot basis, we're waiting for those improvements to be made. So the monies would be available. I think it's a good compromise. I want the sisters to be successful with this, and the builder to be successful with that. And I am going to make a motion to approve this, and, and so it gets over to the Board of Supervisors so we can move on with this. So I'll call It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time, and appreciate the conversation.
Yep, appreciate your work on this. Thank you. Next up is R16-005A, Harrison Crossing Square.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have the full computer, please. Thank you. I said, this is a request to amend the approved proffers of R0519, which was approved in 2006. This is a companion case to R165B, the case to follow. In 2006, the property was rezoned to commercial three for the construction of a bank and office with proffers. One of the approved proffers requires that the property be developed in accordance with the generalized development plan. The GDP, which you will see shortly, depicted a bank and two office buildings. To date, only the bank is developed on the property. The property has limited access with a right-in, right-out turning movements on Harrison Road, which is a four-lane divided road. The applicant has indicated that this limited access has hindered the development of the property in addition with the proffers restricting what may be developed on the property. Tonight, the applicant is requesting that the proffers be amended by removing, first, the requirement that the property be developed in accordance with the generalized development plan, second, that the requirement that the property be included in the Route Three Special Service District. This is acceptable because the properties are currently in the district, and so that's no longer applicable. Third, removal of the requirement that the property be developed with LID guidelines, and that's no longer applicable because of state code requirements are much more stringent than what LID requirements were when this case was approved. Also, to remove language related to landscaping and common areas be maintained by a property owners association. That's no longer applicable because the property will be under a single ownership. And then finally, remove the requirement that the buildings on the development be built to the design standards of Harrison Crossing. The applicant has a potential user for the property, and that user has submitted a site plan for the development of a self-storage facility. The property in the, in the next case was acquired separately and then rezoned separately under the same proffers, and hence, that's why we have to have two public hearings, because we have two separate cases. So we'll, we'll address the other properties later. It was also developed under the same proffers. This is an aerial view. The properties, the subject properties are striped in red. The Bank of America is this property here on the corner. This is the Walgreens here. This area here has since developed with a number of consumer services, commercial users, and so hence, that's one reason staff feels like the development of the self-storage facility is appropriate in, in this area. This is the zoning map. Again, the subject parcels are hashed in yellow. You can see the property to the west is zone Office One. That's a 37-acre piece, and then all of the other surrounding properties have the C3 zoning category. This is the GDP that was originally approved. The area in blue is the subject of the first case that was rezoned in, in 2006, and then later, the two parcels in beige were rezoned in 2008 under, with this GDP, which serves for all of the property and the same proffers. Staff recommends approval. The proffers continue to limit the uses on the, the property. It continues to limit the size and the heights of the buildings on the property. It maintains the freestanding sign, design guidelines be consistent with Harrison Crossing, and it maintains the increased landscaping in the parking lot. Key findings in favor: the amendment will allow development of several parcels that are currently vacant, and the proposed use is consistent with the current development pattern in the area. The findings against: the amendment will allow an alternative design character, and then also, when this property was rezoned back in 2006 and 2008, it was envisioned that there would be office uses, not a self-storage facility. But that's simply, I think, a result of market conditions and the way the area has developed. So staff does not have real concern about that, but in 2006, they expected it to be something different. But based on the findings in favor, staff supports the amendments and recommends approval of our, of the case with the amended proffers. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a site plan of the self-storage?
I do. I don't have it electronically, but I have a hard copy.
Could I see a copy? Is that all right?
Perfectly fine.
And the self-storage facility is located entirely on the parcel that is part of this application? Is that correct?
Yeah, the way it will be designed, it will encompass the majority of the three subject parcels.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for, we'll hear from the applicant. Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chris Hornung. I am Vice President of Planning and Engineering for the Silver Companies. When we rezoned Harrison Cross and we started that project, I think, in '03, '04, it was a very ambitious project with the Home Depot and the, the Giant. We were able to acquire additional parcels on some of the key corners. When this project in particular was done, the main goal of the rezoning was to pave the way to allow for the Bank of America to go on the corner. And at that time, we were asked to produce a GDP for the bulk of the property. I, I do have one correction in Leon's report. When we did that GDP, the buildings shown there were commercial retail buildings. They were not offices. They were sort of strip center buildings that were proposed in the back. And what has occurred since the recession and through that period and today is that space that is currently available in the market for small retail enterprises has gone primarily vacant. If you look at the shopping centers along that corridor on the opposite side of the road, the buildings that were built for multi-tenant space, such as where the Cocoa Fit was and the Verizon, have struggled to find tenants for those buildings. This particular site, we have stuck with the original obligation that we put in that would only have one entrance. It's got a single entrance for the Bank of America and for the other uses on the property. What that does, because that entrances are essentially a right-in, right-out only, makes it very undesirable for most multi-tenant users, build people who want to be on the corridor, high visibility, quick in and out. In order to get in and out of this space, you actually have to pull in, and when you come out, you have to continue on Harrison Road and make a U-turn to get back to Route Three. So for those reasons, we have not been able to find users for this particular location that would fit what was proposed under this original plan. Since that time, we have looked for other users. We've been successful in finding tenants for the Route Three corridor in Harrison North with a lot of the new uses that have popped up over there, and with Harrison South, which is the other side of the road. Included in those are, as Leon- Leon pointed out, the new multi-tenant building that is being built adjacent to the Goodwill. That is proposing a multi-tenant space in that area, some of which has been spoken for, but some of it will also add to the existing sort of vacancy that's in that corridor, again, making development of this site per the GDP unfeasible at this time. We were approached by two users, one of which being the self-storage user, that was an allowed use under the zoning but did not match the GDP. So in a bizarro world, if they built, they could build a self-storage as long as they built it in two buildings that were with a footprint that's shown in that building. But that, we didn't want to propose to do something like that. So instead, we've come in and asked for relief from the GDP. The other use that we've talked to is an expansion of the Fredericksburg Islamic Center. This would allow them to expand onto that property and would provide an opportunity for them to expand where they currently are rather than the location they were originally proposing on Old Plank Road. So between those two uses, those are uses that are not high-traffic generators. They are services and a religious institution, and they don't require, or they are, they work in an area that does not need that immediate in-and-out access and high accessibility that would work in that location. So we think these are good uses to help round out that portion of the overall project and would be good uses for the county. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have and hope to have answered.
Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Burns?
Chris, is that 2.9 acres in the SSD?
It is. It's already in it, and that's why we struck it, because to have a proffer that says you'll agree to be in it when it's already in it was not necessary.
Any other questions? Anybody here that wishes to speak to that, I guess? With that, I will close the public hearing. Just so I'm clear, the self-storage units are located entirely on this, on the parcel in this application. Come on back up, Chris. Let me, I want to be clear on what I'm...
Originally, we submitted this as one application with both parcels, but we were told that because the two rezonings were done at different times, we needed to come in with two separate proffer amendments. The self-storage building actually straddles the line between the two. So it's not as clean as one is on one of the original cases and one is on the other. So to answer your question, it's not entirely on this application, but the storage building is entirely on the two applications that have been requested for amendment.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments at this time? Yeah, with that, I think it's a good use here. I'm very interested in the site plan for the self-storage units. There are some characteristics there that I think we want to pay attention to of the area. But with that, I think this is in my district, so I'm going to make a motion to approve this application. With that, I'll call the That was unanimous. So we'll go to the next application. Is that you again, Leon?
Yes, sir. And essentially, the facts are the same as in the prior presentation, so I wanted to go through that again and simply ask if you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we do. Chris, do you have any additional comment at this point? Again, I will open the public hearing. I'm assuming there's no comment. I will close it. For the same reason, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the vote, please. That was unanimous. Thank you very much. New business.
Lord Computer, please. Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's presentation is for a request to authorize public hearings for proposed amendments to the Historic and Highway Corridor Overlay Districts, as well as the Accessory Uses section of the County Code in relation to the Slaughter of Domestic Laying Hens provision. This is an overview. There's two distinct areas that we're looking at this evening. One has to do with Article 5 within the general development standards pertaining accessory uses, and the other one has to do with the overlay district sections in which we've lumped together Historic and Highway Corridor Overlay District. And the reason I've separated these out tonight is we are looking for initiation of these amendments for public hearing this evening. However, when we do come back at public hearing, assuming they are granted this evening or in the future, these will be two separate public hearing cases because they're in different articles and they kind of, different subject matters altogether. So first of all, focusing on the accessory uses proposal, the amendment, I just wanted to clarify for everyone that may be watching on television this evening or had an interest. The amendment is not applicable to livestock under the use agriculture, farming operations. This proposal has nothing to do with this. The application is to the backyard chickens ordinance that was adopted back, I think, 2012 already at this point. So it's specific to those smaller lot residential chicken-keeping situations. The proposal would remove the domestic laying hens slaughter prohibition that's currently in the code. As proposed, the domestic laying hens raised on-site for personal consumption may be slaughtered on-site only inside a fully enclosed structure where the slaughter is shielded from public view. The draft, as you see, is consistent with Planning Commission direction that we had received on March 18, 2015, at Work Session. Those minutes were attached in your packet for reference. As for the Historic Overlay District, moving on to the Overlay District section proposal, staff has modified reference to providing incentives for the upkeep and rehabilitation of older structures as a purpose and function of the Historic Overlay District. Right now in the code, it simply references providing incentives for rehabilitation of older structure. With input from the Historic Preservation Commission, they sought to expand that to include otherwise encouraging such efforts through additional means. So there could be other ways outside of always being forced through incentive means to try to rehabilitate older structures. One of the things I can bring up, just as an example, that we've seen with the update of the code and the zoning ordinance, is we've added a number of different uses in the rural areas of the county or other areas where it may build economic value to preserve and rehabilitate older structures. For instance, in rural areas, we added bed and breakfast in some instances as by-right uses. So it may be easier or more incentivized to put a business in a rehabilitated older structure as an attraction. So those are just some of the examples. The proposal correct references to the Code of Virginia in the section referenced here, 23732. The code, as currently under our review, it points to an incorrect section of the Virginia Code and/or outdated section, which has since changed. We've also added a Code of Virginia reference in 23735, and we've redirected the Historic Overlay District review processes in coordination with the Historic Preservation Commission to the Planning Director instead of the zoning administrator. This is simply because Planning Department, Planning Director typically are the liaison with the Historic Preservation Commission and work with them much more closely than the zoning administrator. So we are correcting that process. As for the Highway Corridor Overlay District, we've proposed to rewrite the Purpose and Intent Statement, removing what we've deemed as unnecessary language. Simply what happens is we have a Purpose and Intent Statement, and there's all these other bulleted items underneath. They're aspirational type of goals. Staff did not feel like they were necessary. It's a get-to-the-point type of amendment, and frankly, we found them to be better suited to a comp plan. Like I said, those items were more aspirational than anything. So we didn't feel that they were necessary in the code. In Section 23766, in the Permitted Uses section, staff proposes removing references to special use permit conditions under a separate section of the Highway Corridor Overlay District, simply because that section was actually repealed in its entirety in January of 2013. In the past, there were listed Highway Corridor Overlay Districts in the Highway, special uses in the Hcod that were not necessarily special uses in the underlying zoning district. So you could have had a C2 zone property, but because you were in the Hcod, you're required a special use. We've removed that, like I said, in 2013, so any references to special uses in Hcod is no longer necessary. We've also struck duplicate language regarding prohibition of sign area transfers from one exterior wall to another. That language is already addressed elsewhere within that same area, the signage ordinance for the Hcod, so we have gotten rid of that duplication. It's part of a cleanup of the ordinance. We've amended a heading in Section 237612 to the word "review" as opposed to enforcement. We found it more appropriate in its references. And we've removed generally unclear and vague language. We've corrected outdated references, some of which I have addressed above, and added capitalization where needed to be consistent with other sections of the code. So with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission initiate the ordinance amendments for public hearing this evening with the following motion. Before I get to that motion, I would state that staff has tentatively scheduled these amendments to move forward for public hearing on January 18, 2017, so it's coming up pretty soon. And like I said earlier, the chicken slaughter provision would be a separate public hearing case from the overlay districts. There'll be two coming forward in the future. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Jacob at this point?
Yes, ma'am. Jacob?
Yes.
I have a concern on Route 1.
Okay.
Where, let's see, the old Route 1, I would say, not to cause the corner side, but up at the other end, where the car salespeople are, not to use cars, but in that area there. Is that in Highway Corridor Overlay District or Historic?
It is in the Highway Corridor Overlay District, within basically either side of Route 1, going from the right-of-way 400 feet inland. On either side, you are within a Highway Corridor Overlay District. So, you know, that was, you were here, I think it was, we took that through in '08, '09 when the Hcod design standards went through. So if we have a redevelopment of a site within those areas, they would be subject to the Highway Corridor Overlay District Enhanced Design Standards, yes.
Yeah, and I have a problem with that.
Okay.
And I'll state to you why I have that problem and to the other commission members and some of the property owners in that area have problems with it. It's our commercial area, okay? We have design standards. We have setbacks and whatever that's needed. And people, property owners that have commercial in that area, they, if you mention, well, you're in the Highway Corridor Overlay District, okay? That's another bureaucracy that someone who wants to buy that and build something thinks, well, we got to go through all of this. And I really don't, I want you, I would like for you to, please, and Ms. Parish, is that you all come up there and let's look at that, because I don't want to prohibit our commercial base. I mean, it's just like we hear, well, you know, you got to do this, you got to do that. But if you don't have to do this, we're willing to come, and so many people are. That area, yeah, it needs dressing up. It really does. And I think that it will be. But I think that we can take it too far with the Highway Corridor Overlay District, and I think we have to look at that portion of Route 1 and that we have to consider, you know, what's there now, and that it will be dressed up, but we don't want to take it through another bureaucracy of what it is at this time. It's commercial. It's there. It's been there, and it's going to stay there. And I just feel like we have to be more business-friendly than to take them through something like that. And Mr. Bullock and I represent that Route 1. And so I would like for you all to come up with me to look at that, please. All right?
Sure. Any other questions or comments for Jacob at this time?
Ms. Sherman, I have one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Burns.
Most of these, I've looking at the Historic Overlay District. Jacob, basically, we're just trying to be more of encouraging to, that's really all the language is going to do, more of encouraging for people to kind of reuse that structure or redo it.
It expands the options as well.
It expands it, yeah. And then on the Highway Corridor Overlay, again, we're not going to make, we're not making it more restrictive than anything. We're just cleaning it up.
It is a cleanup, and like I said, the majority of the changes that you see is in the Purpose and Intent Statement, which is, frankly, it's vague and hard-to-interpret type of language. Like I said, it's aspirational type of language. In a code situation where you're looking for measurables, it's hard to really justify keeping it in there. I don't see anything in there that's more restrictive by any means. Like I said, one of the things I had referenced that happened in 2013 is we removed this, but in terms of, you know, referencing bureaucracy or an extra step, in the past, prior to 2013, yes, there certainly was because you had incidents where there were by-right developments that were forced into a special use condition, public hearing situation, additional application because they were in the Hcod. But in 2013, for instance, in that case, that major roadblock had been actually removed by staff. So in this sense, we are definitely cleaning it up. That doesn't change the design standards that are in the DSM. The actual design standards for the Highway Corridor Overlay District are in the Design Standards Manual, which is a separate document. But yes, this is just a cleanup.
What you're asking for tonight on this particular public hearing is, if anything, it's the cleanup. It's not really making it more restrictive.
That's correct.
Well, to get there, I think that we have questions that we need to, that need to be answered also. And that's why that I would like to, you know, to meet with you all with that, because I don't think that even citizens who own property there understand exactly what we got there and why do we have it there. I mean, and that's my question. Why do we have it on that little strip that's there? I just, I voted for it. I questioned it when it was, when it came before us, but anyway, I voted for it. I've watched it. I've seen it, and I think, I just, I can't see a purpose for it.
In the case of Route 1, I would, I would say that the Highway Corridor Overlay District runs from the Fredericksburg City Line all the way down to the Po River. So it's, it includes much more than just Market Street to mine, but it is in that area, yes.
Yes, it does. Absolutely. But just like I stated to you a few minutes ago, that Route 1 and on down Massaponix area there, that's our last, our last commercial that we're going to see in that area. I mean, in Spotsylvania County. That is it. And I mean, so therefore, I don't think that we can, we have to be as restrictive, restricted as we can be. And that, and just like I stated, we have setbacks. We have design standards. And all of those things, I don't see the need for it. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, let's be friendly to commercial and see what we can do. I think we can add too much to things sometimes.
Anything else? So Jacob, you want a motion?
Yes, we're seeking authorization for public hearings.
I'll be glad to read the motion.
Couldn't have suggested that.
Thank you.
Based on the public necessity convenience, the general welfare of good zoning practices and compliance with Virginia Code, I move that the Planning Commission initiate changes to Spotsylvania County ordinances found in Chapter 23, amending and adding provisions related to the Historic and Highway Corridor Overlay Districts, ordinance 23168, and accessory use domestic laying hens slaughter provision, ordinance 23165.
Is all of this for a public hearing? Is that what it is?
Yes, it will be.
That we can have a public hearing on it?
Yes, we're looking at those on January 18, tentatively, yes.
Okay.
There are no other questions or comments? I'll call the vote, please. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Is there any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the vote, please. Motion is approved. Thank you very much. See you next meeting.